Gathered, so I will convene our meeting so we can be respectful of everyone's time. Lord, thank you for this morning. Lord, we just continue to work through all the issues that we are confronted with as a commission and, or just we continually seek your guidance and your presence in those decisions that they would benefit those here in Leclae County. Lord, we're grateful for our first responders, those who have recently been involved in the cleanup efforts of the storms throughout our area, throughout this part of the city. Lord, we're just grateful for their acts of service and lots of times those volunteers that are willingly going out to help their friends and neighbors and that's what makes Leclae County a great place to call home. Lord, just be with us as we take up the meeting agenda before us this morning and lead us throughout the rest of the day and bring us back here next week, Lord, to continue to do the work that we've been given the privilege to do. We love you and we thank you in your son's name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I don't see any minutes unless overlooked, okay, alright, and it's possible that overlooked them, so. Alright, next thing would be SB 190 applications. We have some for approval and I would entertain that motion. Looks like we have twelve of them here, four twenty-two, twenty-five. I'll make most of the approvals, twelve, if they're stating.
I'll second it.
Okay, and the motion's second approved. We've seen your applications as presented in private discussion. Seeing none in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same thing. Mike had given me a recap and this probably for the last week, it looks like four-four through four-eleven, during that time span, we had a hundred and four renewals, forty-eight new, for a total of a hundred and fifty-two. I think we're probably down to about maybe a little over eight hundred that haven't renewed, so our efforts will begin in earnest to contact those individuals to stress to them the importance of renewing and we'll do that probably by individual phone calls. So, just give you a heads up what we're on that. We've got about a little over a month left and we'd want to make sure that those who have not renewed, if they so choose, be aware of that.
And that would be a good push out too, Jack, if you guys can answer.
And then with the SB 190 applications, we always have some that are, that need to be reviewed. And so I think we've got five or six here this morning and we'll refrain from using any names, so we'll just use the circumstances surrounding these applications and make the determination whether or not they, they should be approved or not. We have two, I think, here that are similar. Okay, so we have two here that are, that are similar. So when we established the senior tax program, one of the things that we made the decision on was that if you sell your property, you forfeit your tax freeze, right? I mean, if you, if you have it at the beginning of the year, you submit an application, but later on you have, you no longer live there, it's just common sense that you wouldn't be entitled to a senior tax freeze. So I'm going to pass these two down. One of them, the property was sold on three-twelve this year and the application had been received on two-twenty-five. And then we have another one that they did not own the property until March twenty-twenty-five and what we made the determination early on, you have to be the owner of the property on January one. So those two, and I, on, on that last one I handed passed down, that's when I encouraged them to submit an application next year. But the process on these would be that one of us, and I have, I have taken that responsibility on last year, unless somebody else wants to, I will personally contact these individuals and let them know of our decision. And then on the back, if you would initial those, there's a place where it says eligibility verification approved, yes, or no reason, and we'll just put decline and initial those for us. And that way, when these are scanned, we can put the reason in there as to why that would be. Okay. The next one we have would be an individual that, well, here, here's another one, sold on February twenty-five, so that's, that's another.
Real close to that same, yeah.
With these others, so if you would initial that one. Thank you. Let's see. Then I have one that's the, it doesn't indicate whether it was a new or renewal. Initially, it's been checked as a renewal and that was wiped it out, but the individual that apparently had submitted last year is deceased and the individual who is listed as his significant other is asking that it be continued, but we do not have that individual as an owner of the property via the warranty deed and perhaps he is in the process of acue, of, of, curing the property, so maybe he would be eligible next year. But your thoughts, if you have any difference of opinion on that?
What if he's able to get that shared by the?
The deadline.
The deadline.
And how long did he live there?
He wasn't the owner of the property on January one.
There you go. He wasn't listed on the deed as of one, is what you're saying.
Yeah, and then there's going to be another one here that might be a little bit of a twist to that. And so, and it might be a different outcome depending on what our discussion's like. And just a reminder, for those who are watching online, you have to be sixty-two years of age or older. You have to be the owner of the property. You can only claim one property in the certi, as the primary residence. You have to be liable for taxes on the property and you have to live on the property and current taxes being paid. And that's the criteria that we established. Did that come to you, that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Did that get pulled off of the, because that's one we need to bring up too.
Yeah, probably got pulled off the printer. I was printing some stuff and I didn't see my name on it.
That, that's fine. I, I was going to go get it off the printer, so that.
Save you some steps. I know you needed those this morning, but.
Yeah.
I had over sixteen thousand something yesterday.
Yeah.
On half a day.
For a few counties. Okay, now, as a twist to that, we have an application that an individual has submitted. The spouse is deceased as of this year. The application was submitted on March tenth. This individual's not the owner listed on the warranty deed, but if you review the statutes, it will say that you have a legal or equitable interest. So in this case, the legal interest perhaps could be, not be established, you know, if you're not on the deed. However, you might be able to establish an equitable interest because you are the surviving spouse, even though you weren't listed on the deed. And so, that's a little bit of a twist to that other one. So, a suggestion I might have here is if the individual would bring in the, like a marriage certificate or death certificate or something like that, but this is one that I think deserves just a little more discussion or, or consideration. So.
I might want to flip back to that previous.
Sure.
You know, I don't know how common law type stuff operates.
That's kind of what I asked, how long did he live there?
Those two have been together for a significant number of years, living together. I don't know.
Well, our intent, Eric, has always been to, since day one, is to honor the intent, well, honor the statutes and consider all aspects of any application in order to be as liberal in our review, in our approval process, as we possibly can be, without being outside the boundaries of the statutes. And so that's when we can come back to that equitable interest and say, okay, what proof do we, do we have? What proof would we require that there's an equitable interest here? So if there's some circumstances that could be produced, that this was an equitable in-interest, I don't, I don't know. You know, this one to me was a little bit, came down, I, I came down on the side that it would be hard for me to see any evidence, but we can give them that option.
I think if we're going to give this one that option, we need to give that one.
Okay, so, so what we, what, and I'm just asking out loud, so what, what types of documentation would we want to receive to be, and, and I, and I'm searching here because that was one that I, that I really didn't see through the review process on a warranty deed. I didn't see it through the process. I don't know common law, so tax liability, didn't, didn't see it.
Well, I think that there would have to be some proof, maybe that some of their money paid for mortgages or.
Joint claim, his as well, or hers or theirs. See, like this one here that's coming up, it's got a quick claim deed which is dated back, predates everything as well.
Is that? That? Okay. I don't have a problem with letting them show some kind of equitable interest, but if you're going to do that for this one, I think we need to let.
I'd be more than happy to, so I will contact him and, and ask him to bring up documentation that shows that he has some interest in the, in the property prior to January one.
Yep.
And I would suggest mortgage statements, things like that, and then I'll bring that back if he produce, if that individual produces documentation. Okay?
List from here, move right off as approved then?
I, I was going to suggest on that one that we receive additional proof somehow, you know, the.
Can I ask that one?
Because we.
Attention please.
Lots of times, some of us or one of us may know an individual and we can, and I can have the tendency to make assumptions, but, but beyond that, I think having some backup paperwork would be, would be good.
Right. And it's always good to have, have more documentation, that if I actually do know that family very well, I've done work for them years, years and everything, which I'm sure you probably know of them as well, so.
Are we going to put no on this for now, or do we need to scratch this?
I would scratch that one out, Eric, and I'll, and I'll.
Bring it back to the assurage, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then on this one, don't, don't initial that one at all and I'll, hopefully I can bring it back next week after I've contacted.
Those two?
Yeah. Okay.
I like that a little better.
Okay, then, the next one I have, there will be instances where someone has, they're, they're eligible by age, they're eligible by they own the property, they're eligible by they may live in, live in the property, they pay taxes on there, but it may be a situation where they, they're doing a, a major remodel or expansion. And we've run into this two or three times. So the next one I'm going to hand to you, the, they, they were the owner of the property, but through the assessor's office, they didn't have her house on the property. So it would have been assessed at a lower value, the value of the land, and not the value of the land and the, and the dwelling. So therefore, if it were frozen, it would only, you know, it'd be freezing here. So this one's one I believe we need to reach back out to and ask the individual to reapply in next year because now the assessor has the land and the house on it, so.
So this land did not have a dwelling on it at the time?
Well, it's, the, the notes attached through, through, through the process, it goes from us, it goes through the assessor and, and, and then back to Mike or Mike and then to the assessor. And if there's any questions, they coordinate their research. And so from the assessor's office, it appears like those notes are, the assessor did not have the house, only had the land. Which, if you, if you think about it, the value of the land is, is a, a relatively small portion of any of our assessment, right? So the individual, if we think in terms of being punitive, really wouldn't be the case because the, the tax credit on just the land itself would probably not amount to hardly anything. And so, and with no value on the house, I, I don't have you freeze something that you don't have a value on.
It's a zero.
We're not freezing lands, any, if there's no house on it.
Correct.
Because it's not home, is it? So we're going to reach out and try to get, for them to reapply, right?
Yeah, so on that one and the one earlier where they acquired the house after January one, the suggestion will always be made that if your circumstances change, please reapply next year.
So I'm thinking this is the no.
That's what I would agree with, yes.
That's great.
And then, again, we'll notify these individuals and, okay. The, the next one I have is an, an individual who deeded the, the property, the home, to a, to a child, an adult child. So the ownership and the taxes are in the children's name, not the name of the individual that lives there. They had submitted an application last year, if I'm not mistaken, or they had inquired about an application last year. And at that time, it was suggested that if anything changed, they submitted an application this year. I cannot want to turn anyone down, so I said, submit an application and the commission will review it. So I will pass this one down. The mom lives there, but the legal interest has been, been given up. And so to me, that's like some of the beneficiary deeds that we look at where, you know, someone may have a trust and they give up their legal interest, but they, but they're beneficiary and so they do have an equitable, equitable interest as this commission has determined in the past. There's no trust on this one. It was simply a transfer of assets from a parent to a child and the individual lives there, but is not, no longer on the property or.
Equitable then.
Joe, was there another part of this one?
That's all that I, that's all that I have seen.
While you review that, I'm going to go to the printer.
Thought it was strange it didn't have much of a letterhead to it. Was there more there?
No.
That's okay, I had a little handrail in my. Do you want to give this lady a chance to prove or disprove whether or not she has equitable interest?
I've spoken with the, with the child, the adult child, and.
He is not eligible for aging at this time?
And, and if so, it'd be on his own property.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Cause he's not living there either?
No. And so, I, again, I don't like to turn anyone down. You know, the, the application, I think anybody can submit an application that, that appears to qualify or could, could qualify. But I did not leave that individual to believe that it would be approved or not approved. I wanted to bring it before the commission and since this is the first time that each of you've had the, the responsibility to review these and it's a collective decision that we've made in the past, I wanted to bring these up for illustration and, and discussion and.
Well, it's probably number four that gets me more than any of it because I'm guessing that the grown child is the one responsible for the property taxes.
If you look on the, there, there's a copy of the taxes there and it is in the, in the grown child's name.
Yep.
We have to pick your three for the seven, two, three, order B, five, when the, that was approved. And I'll initial those and I'll give them to Mike, so she, you give them, okay. And then the two that we have, need to review. Okay, now, this, this other one, I don't believe there's been an application that's been submitted, but there's been some dialogue back and forth and there may be an application sitting over in the assessor's office. But this one is a situation where parents and children both live on the parcel. So there's, there's, there's a, a home and then there's been a detached building, garage, that was converted into.
Another dwelling?
Yeah, yeah. And so, and, and there's joint ownership here. So when you look at the, the deed, it's my understanding that all four, the parents and the, and the, and the children, all are on the, on the deed. The individual that could submit the application would qualify because they, they're age sixty-two, they're the owner of the property, they do live in one of those two buildings, they do pay taxes on the property, so they meet the criteria. But the question that is being raised is, they want to freeze the whole property, both houses. And so my suggestion was just submit to the commission which one you're living in and then the assessor would be able to, like she, like we've done with duplexes, this half of the duplex is frozen, the other half isn't. Now, the one person that is frozen may own both, both, both halves of that, both, both sides, but only the portion that is occupied by the individual is frozen. And we did that a handful of times last year. Or, I can give you an example that I can think of personally, is that technically, I own two homes on the property where I'm at. And I live in one, I'm eligible, I have the senior tax freeze. The other one's occupied by my son, he's not eligible for the tax freeze. It, it wouldn't fit the guidelines that I would be able, allowed to freeze both of those. But their, their appeal is, and I told them I'd bring it to the commission, and they're, you know, they're doing their research and they've quoted IRS statutes and, and, you know, it, you know, the statement here has nothing to do where we technically live within our property. And so, there's half of it and I'll bring the other half up here and see if I can print it. My suggestion still remains that they're able to claim one of those. But not, not both.
The way I would see this is if, if both parties or both dwellings are equal to the age limits and the statutes where it's written up, then they can file separately. Because, yeah, they can only, if they're only filing one, if this individual here that wrote this is filing on theirs and they need all the criteria, then yeah, theirs needs to be separated out. Because, same as your scenario there that you brought up, I have that same scenario going on, other than I'm not eligible, I already got that right, I'm not tax-free eligible yet. But anyway, with that being said, that I have that same, similar situation going on with some of my children as well, you know, but mine is different parcels as well, it's not the same parcel. So, you know, it's, it's all in how everything is written up and the way that we've got our rules still stated there. What are you looking for? Yeah, that's it. That's why I said, I didn't know where it come from, then Randy ended asking about it, because it's in there. That's why I said, I didn't know where it come from, then Randy ended up asking about it, cause he was in there, right in the mix. I guess he was creating the same kind of numbers in the middle of my stuff, so.
You know, here the, in one of the emails, the house is really just an outbuilding or a shared property separate from the main house, but part of the same address. Their house does not have a separate address and nothing built or metered separately for any purposes. We have one property tax bill for the entire property. Uh, the term primary residence is intended for when people own more than one property, meaning more than one address. And this is the, um, their appeal, their interpretation. People who own both lake house and house in the city would need to designate which one is their primary residence. We only own one property with one address, collectively, live together with all four of us. Therefore, we believe you're defining primary residence incorrectly for the purposes of this tax freeze credit and nothing on our property should be split or separated for any reason. And, uh, that was some of their justification for appealing. And I think my response, our decisions are based upon the guidelines outlined in the statutes. Only one property, primary residence can be claimed. If you have any questions, uh, give them my, my phone number. You know, um, number two here, I am claiming only one property as a homestead for purposes of senior citizen property tax credit Missouri, and I do not claim real property anywhere else in the United States of America as a primary residence. I don't know how you can have two primary residences, um, you know, to me that indicates one. Doesn't indicate multiple, but we've had individuals who have, um, uh, we had one application that, um, an, an individual from a neighboring county had, um, submitted an application there, but he also had a house here in, uh, Leclae County. So I suggested to him, just choose one, and he was okay with that. He can choose Camden or Leclae, um, but, uh, he chose to choose Camden, not Leclae.
I want a little more time to think about that one.
Okay, can I, can you give me some idea, uh, what I need to be looking for when I call this person back? And, and, uh, so I can give them some, some direction, um?
No. I just need a little more time to pull it right back through my mind.
So, if I'm unable to locate the application, uh, would it be your desire that I ask him to submit an application? That they submit the application for additional, um, uh, review? Cause at this point, if I can't find the application, then really it's, it's a, it's, it's a move. And, and it may be in the assessor's office, but there may be a few more over there. But, uh, but I'm just curious what part of the statutes that, um, that are not clear in this case.
Well, may I have a copy of, or will you provide me with a copy of that? So I can look at that, please.
The statutes? Absolutely, I will have, yeah, absolutely, okay. Alright, so that's all I have on those. So now we will go to general county business. And I think that was a good, good discussion. I think this helps, um, provide, uh, clarity and uniformity in how we arrive at our decisions, um.
Uh, the only thing I really got, I had a gentleman reach out to me and, uh, had said in the past that he had done like a trash pickup and the county had given him some sacks and trash bags and stuff to pick up along his road, his property and everything. And, uh, he was still wanting to see if he could continue doing that and if we would come through and pick the trash bags up, kinda like how MODOC does.
Yeah, so in that particular case, when we, uh, had, um, like a countywide cleanup day and part of our, uh, adopting part of North Highway Five as part of the MODOC program, which is now discontinued, we'd extended that out to individuals. In that particular case, I went out with my truck and I picked up his, his trash bags that, you know, he cleaned up a portion of his road there. And, um, I picked those up and I took them over and put them in the dumpster at, um, at, uh, Broken Bridge, um, so. That's.
Right, and that's basically what I told him that for right now, if he wants to do that, to let me know prior to picking up and I'll bring it to commissions, if they don't do it, I'll do it at least this one time myself. You know, and we'll see. But what I told him was, instead of leaving it, you know, where thirty feet or so along the road edge, I'd rather take them back to his driveway and set them up and I stop and throw them all in from right there. You know, is what I suggested, so.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we had, uh, a thousand individuals like this that wanted to, uh, help Cleat keep the county roads, um, free of the trash and litter. I, I'm not opposed to it, Joe, it, it takes up the space over at the, uh, at Broken Bridge from the dumpster. It was ten bags last year, uh, here.
If we said eight to ten, normally.
Here in the supply room, uh, we have some of the bags left over from, uh, that MODOC gave us. So there are some of those here in the, in the corner in the supply room.
He stated, uh, that he believed he has enough bags to left over from last year also, so he wouldn't need any more.
All right, if you're okay, would I just coordinate with him and then, um?
I think it's good efforts, but, you know, our, our citizens and stuff, trying to do their part and that's, that's what we would like. And that's what I'd like, you know, little effort from them in order to get extras, you know, a lot of the extra, just get more stuff done. You know, it's a little easier.
I, I have no reason to object, I don't object to, uh.
Other than that, the rest of everything I got is just normal weather and road work and taking care of that stuff.
Okay, uh, public comments, items listed on the agenda.
Uh, when was the deadline for the senior tax freeze applications?
Yeah, it's in the May, it's either the thirtieth or thirty-first, yeah, I'm not sure when the weekend fell there.
Okay, I'll double check.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else, Linda? No?
I came to find out on the LAF, you guys said that there would be a decision today?
I had called you last week and I'll bring it back up for, after our meeting last week. Uh, I called you, Joe had indicated that he would like to know about, um, specific requests that you had, your response was any or everything that you presented in budget. So that was Steve's response, I don't know whether I got back to you or not, Joe, but.
Yeah, you, you had, you had given that in passing, uh, cause I was in a hurry to get out, go on my way to other things I've been late for and everything, so. And, and with that, Steve, you and I had a short, brief conversation and I appreciate you taking time. But, yeah, I'd still like to know, it seemed like whenever, what little bit of research I've been able to do, but I have been a little bit busier with a few other things than what I thought I would be, but, uh, it seemed like most of those was coming from specific donors or for specific items. And that's why I was asking and questioning stuff to see there, uh, because to me, not that it wouldn't help or benefit, but it's almost like a different bankroll or something, I don't know, I'm, I'm a little Larry Steele on opening up a different can there at this time.
Well, I've got a couple of donors and they wish to remain anonymous, which that is part of the LAF deal.
You bet.
I mean, you guys would get a financial report at the end of the year of what happened, but without names. So, uh, but that's what I'm working towards. I know the sheriff's department has it, it was approved and it seems to be a good working deal for them. If mine is denied, my question is, are you gonna deny theirs when it comes back up? I think it's gotta be signed every, what, three years or five years agreement on that, so.
I can't speak to that, that predated, uh, my time here at the commission and we have, we've not approved another, uh, department head, so we've not, uh, singling out an individual. For me, it comes back to, uh, good, uh, management of county funds and the budget process and, and, uh, and I have, uh, concerns about expanding, uh, that, um, beyond where the boundaries already exist. But this is a deliberative body and, and if there's any decision to be made, I would entertain a motion, um, or I, or we can table it and.
I, I would still like to table at this time to just for, for the research on my own, uh, and I, and I don't know exactly how long it'll be, I'll try to do due diligence for you, uh, and try to have something here within the next couple of weeks. You know, and granted, this is the only thing I have to do, which I know you, you understand and respect that as well. And I appreciate that.
And that's why, when we had our conversation because of, recent staffing changes in other departments, I let things go for a while and I told you that, that, cause I know you guys have a lot on your plates, so I let that go, but. I know I have an office to run, I'm just trying to, trying to move forward, so.
You bet, I appreciate it.
I'm trying to involve you guys, that there is other avenues I can take that doesn't involve the commission and I'm just trying to make this a, a conglomerate deal instead of a isolated deal, so.
You seem to be very intent on, uh, on this, so I would suggest you reconsider your thoughts on, uh, not uh, entertaining the other process because you obviously are, are passionate to be in your request of over one point seven million dollars additional for the need of your office. So, uh, with that being the case, if you have the ability to accrue other funds, I, I don't know what that would look like, but, uh, it sounds like you do have some other avenues, so.
That is the nice thing about networking with other corners, at the Corners Association, I, there's other processes in fact with other counties.
So was that a motion to table?
Table.
Okay, motion to table. Um, any other, uh, good routine business? Did you have a chance to see the forms?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Anything else?
Public comments, items not listed on the agenda. I'll see, uh, uh, any other business to come before the commission?
This right here doesn't say what's going to, I mean, does that, Serpice says from.
Oh, it's just higher. Look down below, it's just higher.
Oh, a hundred and two, one, okay.
Okay, gentlemen, anything else?
We've sold out this time. I'm trying to get with, uh, with the warehouse, visit again with, uh, Knights, wanna deal like that, and also with DNS movers, to see how that would work. Got them set up for the twenty-fifth, they'll haul out everything there.
Twenty-fifth of?
Mm-hmm.
They're supposed to be here in two, three, four days.
Play Friday?
Good. Good.
Yes, sir, so it should be out of that back half.
Okay.
By the thirtieth, so. I'll get back with, uh, the health department.
Okay, so call, um, uh, I had a call from the health department and, um, they were wondering when they needed to, um, remove their equipment. And, um, at that time, I indicated it'd probably be another thirty days or so. Uh, but they, they're ready to go, but they want as much notice as possible, so, um. Yep, she, she had in court.
You bet, you bet. I'll reach out and talk to me some later.
Okay. All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, in a second, we can adjourn.